We'll call this meeting to order. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and then Councilman Moody, we give our invocation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear God, thank you that we are allowed to gather freely here tonight to do the business of the town of Fort Mill. Thank you for all those in attendance and be with those who are not here. In your name I pray, amen.
Amen. Council, you've been sent out the minutes for June the 6th, June the 13th, June 17th, and June the 24th.
I have one added, I believe, I think, Mr. Pettit, I believe, on the June 13th meeting has me absent. I'm pretty sure I was there. You might want to just double check your notes, but otherwise, other than the edit, I would make a motion to accept as submitted.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Public comment pursuant to section 2-246 of the Code of Ordinances for the town of Fort Mill, any citizen of the town may appear for council for the purpose of providing public comment on any municipal matter except personnel matters. Those who wish to speak must sign in outside of chamber. Council chambers prior to the start of the meeting, citizens will be given three minutes each to speak. Do we have anybody signing in?
We do. We have one person, Toni Cordell.
Yes.
She would like to speak?
Thank you. I've been in Fort Mill about three years. This, at Christmas time, I had the opportunity to have an incident that I got to go see Officer Ryan. I was midway between here and Walmart and two law enforcement cars came flying at me, one behind me, one in front of me, lights and sirens. And my thought, I can't say it out loud, but my thought was concerning. But by the grace of God, they trapped a guy between them, guys escaped their car, and they were caught. Law enforcement did an excellent job, as scared as they made me. This last month, since I was here last, I almost went Karen on two people while I'm in my car. I'm 82 years old. I expect other people to drive safely. I do the best I can. Post office car came in behind me so fast, I thought he was going to hit me, and then he tailgated me. When we got in that tiny little road to go to the post office, I slammed on my brakes and blocked his road. He couldn't go around me, and I got out of my car. And I said, "Stop." I didn't say, "Stop." The tone of voice was a little bit more intense than that. I let him know that I don't like to be tailgated. I told him to stop. I went to the post office for the third time to complain about those cars tailgating. And then this week, I was in Baxter. If you know, and I don't know the names of the roads because you don't have signs up in all of them. I was Market, and I was faced Ilios. Is that the correct name of that little restaurant? On my right-hand side is a hedge. A couple with two children was crossing the road behind the car in front of me at the stop sign because this guy was in the crosswalk. So I stayed back probably a little further than I needed to, but I was trained that pedestrians have the right of way. The two adults took the two children. Children were probably invisible in front of me. The car behind me on that two-lane road, I'm trying not to be nasty, I see it outside in my window. It's a big gray car pulls through the stop sign, and I couldn't get out of my car and yell at them. Pulls around and parks. I pulled around, turned my car around and parked, and I got out of my car again. I can mostly control myself, but I yelled, and I went and took a picture of the car license plate and yelled at her. I said, "You just put children at risk." And I didn't say it that nice. I did not use swear words, but my tone of voice made it perfectly clear. I was angry. I had a few words with her, and she said she's sorry. I feel like that. That ticked me off a whole lot more. I called 911 to report the incident. Law enforcement Police Department, 911, told me that when I, she let me explain, and then she asked me where it was. They said Valentine. She said, "That's sheriff, not police." But she also said to me, "Policemen can't do anything about it unless they see it." I said, "My eyes are just as good as theirs." The deputy that heard me on the phone was remarkable and let me vent without interrupting me. I was so grateful because I didn't literally know what to do with my attitude and my fear and my frustration. So I just want to congratulate law enforcement, whether it's police or sheriff, in Fort Mill. I've been impressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can tell you, I agree with you. I do about 40,000 miles a year. Alan, you probably do at least about a year.
Oh, I'm old. I only do about 1,200, 12,000.
Well, the lack of common decency and respect and even common sense is unbelievable out there.
For me to get out of my car.
I would just say, be careful. Don't engage. You shouldn't do that.
I saw my training at Quantico. I'm not afraid of people. I do not pack a gun. And at my age, if it's time to go, it's time to go. Jesus knows that time. I'm not afraid of people, and I'm not afraid of violence.
I remember you telling me that story at Walmart because I had a Fort Mill jacket on about six months ago, and I was like, "Where have I met you before?" And you were commending our law enforcement to me and the checkout register at Walmart. So, good job, police.
I've been delighted. Thank you very much.
Thank you for speaking.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn.
Appreciate it.
Come back anytime.
Bring us the cake. My cake.
There are no presentations tonight. We'll move on to Old Business. Old Business Item Number One, First Reading. An ordinance to authorize staff to enter into a lease agreement with Selco, partnership doing business as Verizon Wireless for the purpose of collecting, I don't know if that word, equipment atop of a town water tank off W Bridge Road. Chris Pettit.
Mayor Protim, I must recuse myself from this item.
Thank you. This item was brought before you, it's been a number of meetings ago, for co-locating Verizon Wireless equipment atop the tank at W Bridge Park or off W Bridge Road, the town's water tank. At the time that it was brought to council, there were a number of questions asked of the legal lease. We've since gone back to their internal attorneys, and they've reviewed the lease. And I've provided within your packet sort of answers to all the questions that were asked at the time. Some of them, they were able to accommodate from their perspective of their lease requirements. Some of them, they were not. And so I've kind of, being numerous of them, I've provided those in detail in your staff report, but I'm happy to go into detail on any of those that you may wish to go into. But the biggest one, I think, from the town's perspective, is just the lease term and the years of 25 years that was non-negotiable to them. Our thoughts in initially going through in these conversations is that while we don't have, we don't have any use for the existing structural capacity on the tank. So this would be an opportunity that we were willing to pursue. And in pursuit of that, there was an opportunity to take advantage of the situation to pay for the maintenance on the tank that was upcoming. Every so often, you have to repaint those towers, and it's a significant maintenance cost to the tune of about $350,000. It's more than just painting the exterior. There's interior work as well. And so this, the way that staff approached this was to try and utilize this request to pay all that upfront cost, and then, you know, they would have their equipment on top of the facility for any number of years. But that was kind of the staff's thought process going into it. But if you have any particular questions on any of the items, I'd be happy to address those.
Well, Mr. Pettit, I think I'm the one who brought up most of those concerns, and I do appreciate you going back to them. There again, the concern I had just, that's been several meetings back, was 25 years is a long time, and tying the town to any agreement for 25 years is a concern of mine, especially since only the LECE will be able to terminate. Now, I see from the notes, we ask if, it should be either party could terminate with 90 months, you know, 90 days or something like that, and it looks like they denied that request.
Correct.
I just, I have no particular specific issue with them putting antennas on there, but new technology could come out. We may need to do something else with that water tower sometime. I'm just, I don't see the benefit of a potential issue we may run in in the future. That's my concern. For, I think it comes down to $14,000 a year that could cause us, you know, much grievance in the future if it happens. I've run into several agreements over the years that sound like a great idea, but that's just, 25 years, Lord only knows what's going to happen. If we could do it in a 10-year chunk, and then we could prorate whatever, but they have the ability to terminate, we don't. I just, in my personal opinion, I just don't think it's in the best interest of the town. But I do appreciate you going back to them with the concerns, and I see you've got a bullet point of all of them.
Absolutely. And to that, I mean, it's not that this was absolutely necessary for us to do the required maintenance. We will do the required maintenance one way or another. This was just one way of approaching it, to have someone else, you know, pay for that cost. But certainly can understand your point of 25 years is a long time.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate, you know, watching out for the taxpayer, so, you know, I think it was well worth it. But that's just my concern, the council, but I appreciate you following up on that.
I think it was probably a well-written contract, but it was all for them and nothing for us. So we don't have any interest in it.
Mr. Pettit, how old is that tower, and what's the useful lifespan of it?
I mean, it extends beyond the 25 years. I mean, the maintenance on it keeps it, which we keep up with, I mean, makes it last quite a long time. I don't have an exact figure for it.
Do we already have money budgeted annually for periodic maintenance?
Yes, absolutely. We maintain anything that comes up. We had not yet budgeted for this, approximately $350,000 for the painting. I think it technically is something that we were scheduling to do maybe next year. So we don't have that currently budgeted, but we plan to budget for that, I believe, next year.
Would it cost any extra to paint it like a strawberry?
You might pay by color. I don't know.
Let you do the artwork. And to Councilman Wolf's comments, thank you for all the feedback on the questions that we had. It was a very good job done by staff, and we appreciate the help negotiating it. And just confirming what he said, there is no clause to get out of this contract. It is a one-way contract.
Correct. Yeah, once you enter into the agreement, the only way out of it is either wait 25 years or to have Verizon decide to back out of it. And the way it is currently worded, their standard is to pay you by month, $14,000 or whatever the math worked out to be. We negotiated for the upfront cost to just, again, help for the intent that we had kind of thought about. But should they decide to leave in 10 years, then they would prorate it, and we would owe them money back for, or let's just say they did half, and we would pay half, them half of $350,000 back.
And what would happen if they were acquired by someone else?
The lease would be assigned to that new entity.
Thank you.
Do we need to vote on this?
Should we want to pursue this lease agreement, we would need an ordinance approved to that end. So either a motion to approve first reading or a motion to deny.
I'll make a motion to deny first reading of Old Business Item Number One.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you.
Old Business Item Number Two, First Reading of an Ordinance to Add Parking Standards for Ambulatory Surgical Facility and Other Matters Relating There To. Chris Pettit.
Thank you. This came before you at a prior meeting as well, and staff has provided some more information in the staff report. I think in some of the conversation at the last meeting was, what do others do for these facilities? And to a degree, the town is trailblazing a little bit for defining parking standards specific to ambulatory surgical facilities. There's not a lot, if any, examples in South Carolina specific to that. But what I will say is, in doing the research of just medical office parking standards, which the town currently requires 4.5 per thousand, in creating this new use, and based off the conversation, which I think council agreed at the last meeting, that the use that we're talking about, ambulatory surgical facilities, does have a less intensive use than just a standard medical office where they're churning out patients day in and day out. So when we looked at medical office throughout the state, a lot of folks are actually just slightly higher than what we're proposing for these facilities. They're just slightly higher for just standard medical office at a rate of about 3.3 per thousand square feet, whereas we're proposing 3 per thousand square feet for this particularly use. So some of staff's thought process in going into recommending the 3 per thousand for this use was that it's just slightly less than what most people require for a full-fledged medical office. But there are examples of some newer ordinances down throughout the state. Lancaster County, which, you know, obviously covers the Indianland area, and the city of Greer, they both have relatively new ordinances, and they actually require either equal to or less than what we're proposing for all their medical office facilities. So that's some of the background that went into staff's recommendation of the 3 per thousand for these facilities.
Yeah, and I think there again, I made the motion last time to defer this because it is a new ordinance, and I think it's a fitting. I just want to make sure we did due diligence, and that was the question, and we deferred it so we could get, have, give you opportunity to do a further investigation. So there again, I don't think anyone had a problem with the new ordinance of creating this for the, for the ambulatory surgery. It was more or less specifically on parking. So I don't know if others had other concerns on that or not.
I think Mr. Pettit's addressed most of my issues with just seeing what else is out there and who else is what their standards are, so.
I mean, I think I still have heartburn over it because I feel like we're creating something that is very specific to this, and I'm thinking forms of precedence. If we make this special exceptions, then another business comes along and tries, "Well, we don't have as many people. We've just got drive-through. We don't have dining or whatever." So, okay, can you make me special exception to minimize my parking? And, you know, we all know why you want to minimize parking, because you want to make a bigger space. So, you know, my thinking of it is, and some might say, you know, why should you really care? But I'm thinking 10 years down the road, if this building does a different function, then it's like, why are there so few parking spaces? What were they thinking? Who did this? You know, so that's what my way of thinking is, is in the future, it could be, I mean, should it really matter? That is debatable. I mean, we've got some statistics. You're saying that it's good to see what some of the other towns are doing, but I just don't like adapting to a specific use, and I think that we could be opening the door for trouble, but, you know.
And we don't, it's not something that we would typically do. And our ordinance speaks to a lot of different things, and it speaks rather openly to, you know, certain uses, just like general commercial, general retail. And so we wouldn't get into a situation where I sell high-end stuff, so I don't need as many parking spaces. We don't get into that. But when we got the hospital, it opened us up to a whole new arena of different things. And I think the medical field is changing quite a bit into some of these new things that just weren't contemplated when we did our ordinance. So that's why staff kind of entertained the idea of this additional requirement, or this additional category for these facilities to look at. And if, for some reason, this did fail in 10 years, and a restaurant wanted to go in there, well, they would have to bring it up to the parking standards for whatever that new use is, so.
And there wouldn't be a way to do that at that point because it would be.
Correct. So, I mean, it would, it would limit what this facility could be used for in the future without any renovations.
Right. And I think, again, in my mind, it doesn't really create a hardship. It's more of an inconvenience. It's something that would either require the building to be smaller or, how many do we have? And sorry to hit you for a random question, but any idea of how many spots this would take away? And I think we talked about it last time, but I can't remember. If we go from the 4.5 currently required down to the 3, roughly how many spots it would take?
Well, again, this is, this is holistic.
One and a half per thousand. It'd be one and a half per thousand. So what's the size of the building? 3,000? What was the size?
Again, this is, this is not for a specific building. Now, do we have one that's currently proposed? Yes. But it's, this is addressing any, throughout all of town, any future project that could come in. This is creating a new standard for all those folks, so.
What is our general, just a general office or?
Medical office is four and a half.
Well, I mean, just what if it's a general spec building? What would it be? Do we have just a, you know?
Just a general.
I know, I know, I know a restaurant's going to be the highest.
Yeah.
Right.
I didn't come prepared to.
I was just curious. I was just, well, I was just going to say, is it, you know, for a lawyer's office, there's a very low turnover.
I mean, medical office is certainly on the higher end of it.
I was thinking, for Penelope, I don't know if you've got one number off the top of your head, but I know restaurants are the highest. Retail are high, but general office space is lower.
Is around what Christmas Day, 4 to 5.
And is this just for medical or dental as well?
This is for anything that meets the, whatever they're called these days, the DEHAC requirement for ambulatory surgical facilities. So it's, and I gave that definition, well, the ordinance actually.
It's in there.
It includes the definition of, it's just the quick in-and-out procedures that are done where you're not, you're going in, you're discharged the same day. So there's no office, there's no clinic associated with it. It's just the room that you get whatever done to you, come out, you're done.
Thank you.
What was Rock Hill's? Did y'all, was that one?
Rock Hill is, is higher, but they have, they have some of these facilities in some older established areas. Who knows why the parking numbers are the way are? I can't really speak to that.
Yeah, I was in one last, last month, and I had to park on the street because there wasn't no parking place.
I know of one that's, that's essentially in the hospital parking lot, and if I'm going to the hospital, I don't care where I park, so I'm going to park in there if there's a parking space up. And so I think it just creates all these shared use issues, particularly in and around the hospital area where you have so many medical offices there. But here, you know, we would, knowing that that can be an issue, we can be proactive and make sure that that's not an issue for us.
And to check on the impact fee side of this, this would not change our current calculations for impact fees?
The impact fees are based on the square footage of the facility.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just think, to kind of go back with Mr. Hudgens, I think we're both thinking the same thing. I know many, when we were planning commission people, I'm going to build this, it's going to be my lawyer's office, or it's going to be a real estate, and then next thing, there's a restaurant in there, and it's, you know, or whatever. So you're, whether the business fails or it just never develops is be the concern. That's why I was thinking more of what the general office is. I think we just need to set, we have one chance to get this right, and that's kind of what the, I think that's where the heartburn comes from.
I just don't, I don't like making exceptions for certain uses, and, you know, that's just me. Maybe things that I'm not fully aware of. I know there, you said there are other places around that have changed their, their ratio, yes, so.
Mr. Hudgens, I get what you're saying, but it's, I think it's kind of a new, not necessarily a new form of medical, but kind of a new service or a newer service, and the ambulatory will be a, kind of a bigger deal moving forward. So I don't, I don't see it as making an exception. I see it as just looking at a new, you know, a new form of it. So, and again, there is less turnover, so there's that.
Yeah, what, again, we're not talking about a specific site, but hypothetically, if we were, we're still requiring more parking than they would actually want to build.
And actually, as they, I think, as the gentleman spoke to before, that how the building is laid out and designed, it's pretty much set, it's, it can only be this one thing. And not necessarily, again, talking about yours, but any building that's set up for ambulatory, same thing. And if the parking's 3 per thousand, then it kind of shoehorns what can go in that building, not a, not a restaurant.
The agency formerly known as DEHAC, they have very specific requirements how these things get laid out, so it probably can't easily be anything other than this. So, you know, there'd probably be major renovations if it were to become anything else.
But in order to make that building fit on this piece of land, that's a sacrifice that has to be made to cut the, cut the parking, so.
Again, that was not staff's intent of going into this to try.
Yeah, that's a good point. We're setting a new ordinance, and I, and I hear you. I just, we asked to defer for them to do due diligence.
And that's what they've done a great job of.
I think he's done, I say he's done due diligence. I appreciate that. Obviously, I understand your concern, but I do also trust our staff too, to do, make the best recommendation they find, so.
Do we include loading zones as part of that parking as well? Because I know a lot of times here, you're going to have areas where somebody's waiting to pick up a patient that has to have a driver. Are those counted in the standard parking lot count?
No, so like, and I believe there's probably a DEHAC requirement for like a drop-off zone, and that would not be included in this.
Okay.
The ones I've been in that have a drive-through where you drop off and pick up.
Excuse me, agency formerly known as DEHAC.
Yeah.
Department of Public Health.
I don't think they call it a drive-through. Like, I like two pizzas and, it's a drop-off zone.
One Oscar Pito go.
All right, staff.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve Old Business Item Number Two.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Yes, thank you.
Old Business Item Number Three, First Reading of an Ordinance Annexing York County Tax Map Number 738000063 and a portion of 738000062 containing approximately 5.25 plus or minus acres located at the intersection of Fort Mill Parkway and Holbrook Road. Penelope.
And I apologize, the screen says second reading, but it's, it's only first reading.
Good evening. Chris, do you have the exhibit, Exhibit 1?
No, I didn't, no.
Okay, that's okay. That's okay. Good evening. So this is first reading. Finally, we're, we're back because we've been waiting on an addendum for the TIA. Just a little historical background, the property owner, or the, excuse me, the client, Ashok Patel, he was, he had done a TIA with our consultant, Kimberly Horn, back in June of 2023. And it was brought to our attention that the site for Harris Steeter, S E D O T, wanted them to redo their TIA because it had been so many years. So what we did was, we had already had a TMA and a TIA for Mr. Patel, and what we did was, we did an addendum. So with this addendum, we took out, we no longer had the crossroads development for site background, and also there was a new revised Harris Steeter. So in this TIA addendum two, we studied now the intersections of White's Road, South Dobie's Bridge Road, North Dobie's Bridge Road slash Holbrook Road, Harroad, and Williams Road. And with this new mitigation agreement, we have an exhibit. And the exhibit, basically with any traffic mitigation agreement, we look at background improvements that other developers have to do. So in this case, because of the vicinity of the site so close to Harris Steeter, we have the Harris Steeter background improvements, and now we have what his development would need to mitigate for traffic improvements. With this TIA addendum, basically everything, the existing intersections stayed a level of service of D or better. The only three areas, which was not really a big significance of change, Harroad, the northbound on, on Harroad approach became a, for both peak times in AM and PM, became a level of service E. So basically, it became a 40-second delay from the stop sign, which means improvements do not help since there are only two to three northbound vehicles that are trying to make that turn at that location. The second one was Fort Mill Parkway and Dobie's Bridge with the new Harris Steeter access to. The overall level of service was E for the, for the peak PM only. So basically, that level of service of E that reduced, it, it basically, it's with or without any site development. So regardless if Ashok Patel came in, it would still have that type of effect of the level of service of E. So that was something that changed. There was a four-second delay impact caused by the site traffic. And then the third thing from this addendum was the Fort Mill Parkway with the existing North Dobie's commercial driveway, it became, it approached a level of service F. However, this F is within the development itself. It was not. However, this F is within the development itself. It was not a, a level of service of F on the parkway. It was internally, so it was not on the parkway. And so with all that being said, you know, we have the TMA, has been written where we know what Mr. Patel's impact he will have to mitigate. And basically, he is mitigating, he is going to provide left turn lanes and right turn lanes into his site from Fort Mill Parkway and also from the Holbrook side where there is a traffic light. He's gonna have to do that. While the other improvements are asked from Harris Teeter. So with all that technical stuff, I know I've probably bored you to death with this technical stuff. The bottom line is, there was not, based on the additional TMA and the additional TIA addendum, there was not a significant impact with doing the, the, the analysis. However, this is a board, you have, this is more so tonight, this is an annexation request. So from a policy standpoint, is, do you feel that this property has value to be brought into the town limits of Fort Mill? Because this is basically an annexation request. And to do business in, in the town of Fort Mill before we can accept an annexation or rezoning or even build a new building, we have to have a traffic impact analysis. This was completed and then we do a transportation mitigation agreement, which has been agreed by both parties, the town and the applicant. And that's all that I have tonight and I'm here for any additional technical questions.
So the, I was taking notes, so you lost me a little bit on number three. So Hair Road, service level E, northbound, Holbrook and North Dobie's is an E at peak hours. And can you walk me through the third explanation of the third part where you said it was internal?
Yes, so it's Fort Mill Parkway and the North Dobie's Commercial driveway, which is basically the property where the White House is today. So this is already in the town limits. And so that project in itself, we use this analysis for the background because we know what's gonna happen over there. It's gonna be like a, a shopping center, which actually Mr. Patel owns. So that internal project is gonna have the level of service and that was brought to this analysis with using the proposed new shopping center on this side of Holbrook.
What, well, give me that letter grade again on that one?
It was an F.
Yeah. And I don't have the analysis right in front of me, so can you go in a little detail about the main differences between an E and an F? Is there any?
It, it's just, you know, the F is like in school, you don't wanna get an F.
Okay, I'm just trying to make sure I'm understanding everything, because I'm gonna do due diligence and be fair to everyone involved, so.
So significantly, you know, really, everything predominantly stayed D or better. Those were the three areas that was E and F. But like, for example, like Hair Road, we can't do anything to improve it because it's only a forty second delay and based on the trip count, there's only two to three northbound vehicles. So there's nothing that we can really do to help that improvement because it's not a significant portion of traffic. And then the other one, Fort Mill Parkway with the Harris Teeter access, that became an overall level of service E. So, but the analysis was, level of service E is both without and with site development. So even if Mr. Patel doesn't develop, that intersection with the Harris Teeter is gonna be a level of service E. And that's just because of the current configuration of a two lane Fort Mill Parkway, existing condition.
When you said that was an F internally, that's inside the parking lot itself?
The White House project, that's right.
I'm sorry, repeat yourself, Mr. Helms.
You said it was internal F. Is that in the parking lot itself or is it?
Inside, inside of that other development.
Is that because the cars can't get to the main flow of traffic quick enough?
If, there's a delay to, to get out of that access.
So the study that was you, or the plan, I guess it was used for the TIA, after that is done, is there a way to make sure that that plan that was based, that this thing was based on, doesn't change? Like a development agreement?
That's a good question, Mr. Hudgens. So what the developer did, he doesn't know right now what type of commercial development, but he was smart. He put the most intense uses, so he doesn't have to come back, he, to, to do, redo a TIA. So we basically, this site traffic calculated an example, and these are all examples, but it was the highest use, was an eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty square foot strip retail plaza, a seven thousand, two hundred square foot high turnover sit down restaurant, and then a seven thousand, five hundred square foot of a fast food with drive through based on National Institute of Traffic Engineers trip generation. So to answer your question, he has no idea, you know, they, they haven't, you know, real estate wise, they don't know what type of use, but they went ahead to plan for the future. So this TIA is based on the highest possible square footage scale of project. But they have to do their due diligence, you know, if this gets annexed, then you have to look at civil plans, building plans, and oftentimes, the site gets smaller because there's other considerations.
So this one actually gives me heartburn for various reasons. Our long range plan, that is a node in that area which is higher density for business, which I think, I'll use Harris Teeter for example. Harris Teeter's gonna localize traffic, it's not gonna generate traffic. It's gonna, people are already going to the grocery store, so instead of driving across town, they're gonna drive to Harris Teeter. So it's gonna localize that traffic. Additional commercial in there may, a fast food restaurant may generate additional trips. But I'd rather see some commercial as opposed to more residential in there also. So I pulled the original two hundred and some page, TIA from, I think it was October is when this first came to us. And, and I have two pages of notes, as you know I would, but basically, the road's already a D and we're, or an F, depends on how you wanted to look at it. And we're gonna put more traffic on that road, which goes against everything, I think, that we've been trying to do, you know, and it's not the developer's fault, he can only mitigate so much. So I think.
That's correct, that's a great statement.
So I think he's doing fine, but the, the road in itself at peak hours, and if, if anybody's got insomnia, go read a traffic impact study because it'll put you right to sleep. But there's a lot of goo, good stuff in there. I also have a different question, I'm trying to read this thing sideways. It's talking about sidewalk, sidewalks and pedestrian ramps with a truncated dome mat. Where are they talking about putting that? Of course, it's actually in your revised TMA update document, it's a footnote in there.
So basically at those intersections of, of the, wherever there's a crosswalk, they, because we have, it's part of that node and we have to have the eight foot multi-use path. So there is basically where.
Would that be on Dobie's, on the Fort Mill Parkway? Or that, because that's a state road, so they wouldn't allow that, would they?
They would have to, I mean, anything that we do with those improved, they, they, the developer would have to work with S E D O T to look at the, the type of crosswalks and, and everything for a pedestrian standpoint. But that is based on our analysis because we do require an eight foot, you know, shared use path and we're into like having alternative modes of transportation, they would have to install that crosswalk to S E D O T standards. And it would be at that traffic light, for example, you know, at that intersection where there is one today.
Because I was, I mean, that's, I understand, I remember that discussion and I think it's great to highlight this is a pedestrian pathway. But as the lady was talking earlier today, people flying through there and, and, you know, especially you've got a neighborhood on one side going to the fast food, we wanna make sure there's a safe way to get across there also. But I just go back, the road's a D or a F, regardless of what's done, the mitigation does nothing to help that. So that's not their fault, the developers, and I appreciate him, his planning for the worst case.
Sure, absolutely.
But it's a, it's, it's a bad, it's a tough situation, it's just a lot of growth in that area. Personally, I think, and I said this last time, I think, I think we need to digest Harris Teeter before we try to talk about anything else. I think that's just my personal belief on that.
If we do nothing, I mean, that it's not annexed, what options are there for that property?
Yeah, you know, develop it from whatever standards York County has. You know, it's, it's not commercial at this point. I mean, obviously, you know, there's a factor because water and sewer, you know, they would need to have something like a commercial development, they would need to have sewer. So again, that's unknown. I mean, it would, it would stay in the county, but the, the whole issue is, you know, the area is changing. And, you know, they felt that because it's at that crossroads, all the other three corners are already commercial. That's why they have asked for that annexation. But Ms. Cook, it, it is a policy decision of which direction will the town go? Do they see a benefit in annexing this into the town for commercial?
And if it stays current zoning, it'd be residential. So for York County, we're looking at one home per acre max, I mean, minimum.
Yeah, because there's no sewer.
Max, whichever, yeah, okay. Just making sure.
I'm looking at the, the plan here, the traffic plan. So if you are coming out of what would be on this corner, you can take a left, so you go through the red light and if you're driving, you have the option to turn left back across onto the parkway, is that right? If you're exiting.
If, okay.
Access two is what I'm looking at here.
On the proposed site?
Yeah, yeah.
You could, you could, I don't know if it would be ideal.
The ambulance would be picking you up right shortly afterwards.
You could make a left to get towards the parkway, but there is a traffic light, you know.
I just, my only concern is.
It's common sense, but we all know people don't use common sense.
Well, I know there's a lot of.
A teenage driver that is gonna try to go use that Chick-fil-A.
So you are, to answer your question, it is a, it is a access to make a left or a right off of the access two?
Property and turn back left across Fort Mill Parkway like this. So, I mean, if there's a commercial, I'm just, just talking this out amongst everyone, and I'm not a great artist, so forgive my chicken scratch. But you know, where you go to, you know, Chick-fil-A, you use the red light, you turn right and then you circle back around and then you come back. I'm just thinking of safety, coming, taking that left hand turn back across that bypass. I can see my fifteen year old son, knucklehead he is, I got this, because I was fifteen. That, I'm just trying to think in the lens of, of a kid or, or making that left hand turn, the safety aspect of that. Could we not funnel it in like a circle and use the light at Holbrook to safely make a left or right turn or straight? That, that's my main concern. I think it's, I want some more commercial on the side. I'm tired of seeing houses. You're right, you know, so I, I wanna be fair to the applicant involved here and, 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 and just talk through that, or is that a possibility at all or not?
So based on this analysis and, and based on, you know, I'm not an engineer, you know, they looked at it, it's one lane that you have an option, that you're either gonna make a left or a right. That's, you know, and you have a, a stem here that it's protected by a median, but it, it doesn't answer your question. So because basically, they could still make a left. Based on the analysis, there was no red flags from the analysis about issues with making a left. They're allowing it. But I understand your concern because things happen. We see that all the time, that it could be one day full access and then you have a number of accidents or God forbid, someone dies and then S E D O T looks at that and then closes the access point. But I hear you, what you're saying, that if they wanna have an access two, you don't feel comfortable with that left turn lane is what I'm hearing.
And that's just the main concerns of safety for me. It's just the left, that, you know, I, I'm all about, I want more commercial on our side of town. I think, I, I get complaints about it constantly, is when are we getting, you know, and I think what this could be, it's not gonna, the, the Harris Teeter intersections are already, and I know your point about where they're at, but at the same time, you know, I just wanna try to be fair to everyone involved. But that's the main pinch point. Personally for me, it's just that coming out, that left hand turn back across that forty five, is it forty five? Thirty five mile an hour, forty five?
Forty five.
Forty five.
Forty five.
That, that's just my main.
Sure.
And, and if, if that could be briefly looked at, I, I would be fine. I, I don't know if that's.
Again, that's something I can ask. We don't have anything in the code to tell the applicant when they're developing this site that they can't make. I can ask that. But, you know, we don't have conditional zoning in South Carolina, so I can't, but I hear you. And that's something, if my memory serves me correct, I know I've probably mentioned it to him before because in, in another place that I used to work, we did establish, we had those same concerns and we established an ordinance that if you were at a traffic light and you were a corner lot, you did not have an access point on the main road. We currently don't have that. So what the applicant and our consultant, they looked at what our regulations are and this is where they said it, it would be okay. But I do understand what you're asking, I just cannot require that.
So let me say this, since we're actually talking about an annexation is what's really before us.
Yes.
Uh, I have two questions. One to answer that one, would, could, so in the development agreement, if it went forward, could that be a restriction in the development agreement that it's a right only?
That's a good question, but a development agreement in South Carolina, you have to have twenty five acres to enter in a development agreement. And this site is not twenty five acres.
All right, then the second question I had is, what is planned for, so across the street, on the other side, it's already in the city and I think there was already some preliminary approvals for that. What, I can't remember what.
The only thing that we're reviewing is a potential bank at this, from one of the out parcels. But nothing, again, we're just going through review. There's nothing concrete for all the, the entire commercial site in the town limits.
So Penelope, if I'm looking at the TMA on that access two, for the North Dobie's?
For both properties, for the North Dobie's as well as this particular site we're discussing. It looks like whether you're going northbound or coming southbound, there's three lanes, a left turn, a straight and a right turn, both ways. So is that technically six lanes of traffic right there? Or I, I guess it'd be four and four, because you'd have three directional, left, right, center.
So going east, it would be three, so Harris Teeter or, excuse me.
Up and down. So east, when it's going up and down, is on top or bottom? I'm sorry.
It's, it's understandable.
Yeah. So.
So this is east, west, this is four.
Okay.
So here, basically, if you're going east on the parkway, the, the background of, you know, the other commercial that's already approved.
Right.
They're building, they have to build a left turn lane. So there will be one left turn lane there, one going straight, and then for his site, he is responsible to build a right turn.
Third, okay. So to Mr. Moody's point, if you're coming out of
access two.
Two on this proposed site, you could technically go straight to access the property on North Dobie's.
You could, you could, you could cross over.
With no channelized signal.
And, and, yeah, without a signal there. And you've got traffic knowing that that intersection at Holbrook and Dobie's is interesting already because you've got the traffic coming safe from Catawba Ridge, making U-turns constantly, not Catawba, I'm sorry, from Blue or any of those businesses there, because you can't turn left. You're already coming out, having to make a U-turn to be able to go back towards Catawba.
I believe so.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, there's not a left turn out of Blue without coming back to Holbrook, getting at that light and then trying to make a turn. So what a lot of very eager students do, because they're ready to go to school, is they come out from Dobie's Bridge at seven eleven, turn right, make a U-turn to go back because the traffic backs up so bad at the light at Dobie's. So you've got a lot of mismatched traffic with that median that's in the road. So I'm like Mr. Moody, I have some heartburn, just the traffic flow in here isn't ideal.
Yeah.
And it's not necessarily from what the applicant's doing. Again, thank you very much for looking at worst case scenario. We, we appreciate that because it allows us to back off if we needed to in what we're doing. But I just, I can see accidents happening nonstop. You've got heavy student use in this area and we still don't know what's gonna come with the Harris Teeter lot.
Sure.
I, I, I'm just interested to see, is, is that ever, could that be a possibility to take advantage of the, the signalized intersection that we have, just to s-
We would have, I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, that, that's just my main question.
So tonight, we're talking about the annexation, but I'm also hearing some policy change discussions. Maybe in the future, if you want staff to do a tax amendment, that if it's at a corner lot and you're at an intersection, you cannot have an access point. Now what I could do, if this annexation, I can ask the applicant, would they consider not having a left? would they consider not having a left turn and just have right turn, you know, um, you know? But but that's a separate case. Like, that's not, we're not really getting into the weeds of that. Tonight, we're looking at, do you think this parcel is suitable to be annexed into the town with, um, the Commercial District, Highway Commercial District? And then, go go ahead.
Well, no, go, since you opened that can of worms of a conditional thing, cuz I remember someone, we had a similar situation on the the other side, further up, well, say the other side of town, where we didn't approve it when we were on planning commission, because they were gonna have their ingress and egress off a residential road.
Okay.
So could, if, 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 and we do look at conditions, cuz on this particular, uh, piece of property, it would make sense to bring traffic in and out on there to utilize that light. But in other conditions, it's gonna be, and I don't know if Ben, if you remember what I'm thinking about, we turned it down because now you're bringing in a residential road into a commercial property.
Well, that's where we, you define what type of road. Now, like, the parkway is like a collector road. So the definition could be, if you're on a collector road and you're at a, and you have a traffic signal, and you have a corner lot, for example, the town does not want you to have access on that collector road. You, we wanna funnel the traffic, and that meets the, um, concerns that Mr. Moody and Ms. Cook has.
It could be conditional. I mean, I know you're kinda thinking this thing through, but I I don't know if you remember exactly what we were talking about. It was like, no, we didn't want them, cuz then it starts the commercial going down that residential road, and the people that lived there didn't want it, so.
Exactly. So that's up to y'all. I mean, we we are in the works. We're gonna be doing an RFP to rewrite our comprehensive plan, which it's time to do, which that also includes the future land use map. Um, so that may change what, you know, the direction of council, what they wanna see. Um, so just keep that in mind. We're also working on that. We have to rewrite it by twenty-twenty-five.
So, yeah, to get back to the point, it's either it's in or it's out. So we're gonna annex it or not. And it, we can't annex it in with, uh, with a contingent, right, to to allow no left turn.
So we couldn't, to be fair, I meant, the mayor's not here tonight. I meant, can we move it to second reading at least? And then have a discussion at that point? I meant, um, that's kinda where I'm at with it. And and so, but there's, there's nothing we can do to maybe do the circle between now and then?
We can ask, but we.
Well, he doesn't have access to Holbrook Road though, does he?
Yes, he does.
He does?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
They really don't even know.
That's access one.
They don't even know what they're putting in there yet. So we really can't build anything, build any greater conclusions, because there's no idea how it's gonna be laid out or what's gonna go in there at all yet, so.
He brought a draft, and there again, we're talking about annexation only, so we keep getting into two different conversations. But he did come up, I think, first time there was a, this is what he proposed, some ideas.
I remember that. Yeah. Does propose for a T I.
And so for tonight, you know, just to refresh everybody's memory, we already had a public hearing. This was what we kept on. So that's why there was not a public hearing tonight. This is first read-in. You can vote on it, and then second read-in, you can have more discussion, since the mayor's gonna be here, um, you know.
Yeah.
You know, I would recommend at least some type of vote tonight, so we can at least go to second read-in.
There's just a lot going on in that area, and that's, uh, that's why I went back to the original Traffic Impact Study, cuz it's a lot.
Yeah, a lot of it is just the way the existing traffic is today without a site built.
So can we go down to Columbia, beat up a couple guys, and get another hundred million dollars to to fix the road, and then then make this real easy?
I'm I'm fine. We'll move into second reading, but that's just me. Um.
So we either need a motion to defer to second or?
You would make a motion approved, and then.
One or the other.
Yeah.
Either approve it or disapprove it.
So if you, if you make a motion to deny, and it it denies, there's no second read-in.
Correct. So I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of the annexation ordinance with a zoning designation of Highway Commercial.
I second that motion.
All those in favor? Uh, all those opposed?
Okay, this will go, um, in August, the second read-in.
To figure all the rest of the stuff out in the meantime. You got nothing to do, you got.
Is there, is there any other, like, I mean, in all seriousness, do you want me to look at other, um, jurisdictions? I mean, I know Lancaster County has it about corner lots on a collector road, and there's a traffic signal. I mean, is there anything else that you would like? Again, it's not case-specific. It it's, you know, text amendment.
My concern is just traffic in general, and there's already growth, there's already developments that are approved and getting ready to kick off. That that's, uh, but it is a no, I get it. But the, I mean, there again, I said earlier, road's already already a D or F, and we're gonna put more on there, and we already know more's coming. It's just, that's insanity.
Yeah.
Uh, but that's just my opinion, so.
No, I think it's a, it's a good point. Um, I think the way that the town has grown, and it's already, you know, in the town limits, the properties might be vacant today, but they have the existing zoning, and you've seen the multiple traffic lights on Fort Mill Parkway. So it may be time to create something where you funnel the traffic on a collector road to a traffic signal instead of having so many curb cuts.
Right. I'm not against it. Also, if, um, we're doing some due diligence between now and the next reading, would like to understand, we're seeing the maximum trip count, but what could a best-case scenario or least-case scenario be for trip count? Um, and them still be able to make use of it. So, and and maybe it's not possible, but when you're talking with the applicant, just understanding, you know, if they're doing, um, I think one of the things that I saw on here was the option, and again, I don't wanna get people up in the uproar that it's coming, but a gas station there, you know, it could be different than what a, um, a vet's office would be, you know? Just the use piece of it. Is there another option besides Highway Commercial that we could consider that would be a less impactful traffic?
Okay, so not so much on, I mean, the traffic itself, he's analyzed it to the the worst.
Which is great, thank you.
So if it's less, you know, obviously, there would be a lesser impact. Now, what you, I believe that your, um, pointing is, if you, if if the applicant would be interested in another zoning district.
It is there a different zoning district that could be considered, and we don't have to discuss it now, but is there something else that could be less impactful to the traffic flow?
There could, however, the other corners are already set at Highway Commercial.
Okay.
So it makes, it makes more sense to finish the corner up, in my personal opinion. I could still look to see, but just from a land use standpoint, this is just another corner.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Penelope.
Yeah, even though we ask you eight million questions, beat you up. Thank you so much.
No, I I was prepared.
No, we appreciate it.
You're very knowledgeable on your subject. That's greatly appreciated.
And they've left now. They're gonna leave.
Good evening. See you later.
All right, new business items. New business item number one, first reading and an ordinance amending budget of the town of Fort Mill, South Carolina for the fiscal year beginning October the first, twenty-twenty-three, and ending September the thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, amendment number twenty-four dash three, Mr. Eric Davis.
Yes, sir. Good evening. Uh, this is pretty straightforward, kinda boring, so, uh, I'll try to be brief. Um, uh, in in your packet is a proposed budget amendment, uh, really increasing the budget by three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Uh, gives us a budget to make some improvements to one-twenty-three North White Street, uh, which is the bike building. Uh, and so we're identifying some, uh, increased revenue on investment income, uh, to pay for that. Uh, bottom line is, we just don't have a budget to make those improvements, and so we just need to to have a pool of funds to uh, fix things, fix things like the roof, caulking, uh, HVAC, all all the good things that come with owning a building. So, uh, um, for tonight, we just need a motion to either approve or deny the first reading, uh, for this budget amendment.
And Eric, all I can say is God bless you, cuz it's nice to see it's so straightforward. This is what we need to do to move forward. So that's, uh, I've read that.
Have we had, actually had a chance to go through the building and kinda do our due diligence, and do we have a a a current needs list or wish list as to things that need to happen?
We do. Uh, there's, there's items, uh, pretty much, um, there's things that have been neglected. And and so, um, uh, we don't have a total, uh, total list, total cost. Uh, but we know that there's things that need to be addressed right away, uh, and these funds will allow us to to do that and and really get us through to the to the end of the fiscal year.
The the amount you come up with, is that based off of a?
It was based off of some estimates that our, uh, project manager gave to us. Um, and it did give us a little bit of, little bit of room, because as with an old building, uh, we're learning things, and we're finding things that really wasn't on the list to begin with. Um, so so like the HVAC, I believe the air, there might have been some air conditioning issues, uh, that even popped up today. So, uh, just just, uh, giving us, uh, some funds to try to make those repairs as quickly as possible.
Yeah, in meeting with the applicant, or not the applicants, but the current tenants, um, the list that we had corresponded and matched perfectly with the list of things that they had, uh, from from a historical standpoint. So I think we're addressing everything that they had in mind, uh, that that we saw as well.
And this is just, sorry, and this is just a a one time that you're asking for right now. Have we set any sort of budget for a a future pool of money for maintenance moving forward, like kinda like with the complex?
We'll be able to do that with, in conjunction with the budget, the 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 budget process, uh, for next year. Uh, we had, when we issued the 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 bonds, uh, we have a pool of money for two oh five North White Street. Uh, but due to some of the tax implications, uh, with that being a public versus, uh, public use versus a private use or a public purpose versus a private purpose, um, those funds cannot intermingle. So that's why we're just having to create a separate little pot for for one-twenty-three.
And this is gonna be operational as to where the other, where the bonds behind the bill, and this is.
Right, but there were some actually bonds that were issued for, uh, to to address deferred maintenance. And so, but since, uh, all of those bonds, uh, were for public purpose, and this is a privately occupied building, we just need to have a separate pot.
Yep.
And given that HVAC has been mentioned, I'm gonna recuse myself from this vote.
All right, Gav.
Make a motion to approve new business item number one.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Thank you.
And we have a committee report, a report from the Ad Hoc Affairs Committee. Mr. Huggins?
Um, after reviewing the two candidates, um, in at length, um, with the committee, we are making a recommendation to, um, approve Christopher Robert McNaca for the position of, trying to remember the specific name.
Municipal Associate Judge.
Right.
Associate Municipal Judge.
Correct. So that was based on looking at a couple of reviews, or reviews, resumes, and speaking with Judge Aquoya and, uh, getting his input as well. So I felt like that was the the best fit.
All those in favor?
Aye. We don't need to make a motion.
Yeah, so that was just the report. We'll need a motion to.
To accept.
So I make a motion to.
Or no, would I make the motion?
You can, that's fine.
So, okay, I have no Ben on the committee. I would make a motion to approve Christopher Robert McNaca for? For the Assistant Municipal Judge.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I thought the recommendation was the motion, so.
Yeah, that's fine. We're good.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Coach.
We have no executive session tonight. So, Mr. Wolf, pretty good at all?
Uh, the only thing I had to say was a wonderful Fourth Holiday. Um, the event on, uh, Elijah Park was outstanding. Uh, I don't know if there was a head count, but it was very well-attended, and I think everyone had a great time. Uh, I'd like to thank the event staff, the police, and EMTs, and Public Works, and everybody for all their time they put forth into it. That was a great community event, uh, and, uh, firing of the cannons. I get the storm, but I got to live. And firing of cannons are also a great local event. Uh, I've heard several people, that was the first time they attended. They were fairly new citizens of town, and they really enjoyed it. Uh, and they wandered up and down Main Street, and they talked about what a great, great place it was. So that's what I, um, the other thing, I just also wanna thank our community for being a safe environment. There's articles all in the news today of mass shootings in towns and, uh, kids getting hurt and stuff like that. And that's like, uh, I would thank the police and the, you know, our citizens for just using some common sense. It's, uh, it's a crazy world out there, and that's why, you know, Fort Mill is the quality of life and the place to be.
Mr. Moody?
All right, I get to talk. Ronnie, good job running the meeting tonight. I think you've done this a little bit now, right? Twenty years?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, okay. Uh, no, touching, um, also on Councilman Wolf's comments, as usual, the great crowd at the park the other night, just a great overall event. Good job, staff. I know everybody put in a lot of effort to that, and to the cannon shooter, Short Family, for making the, uh, cannon rounds and all that. That's a pretty intricate process that runs off of drop cords and gunpowder, if you wanna know the the juicy details. All you need to spark, but drop, Pringles can, full of gunpowder. That's all I can say. So, but anyway, Fort Mill's just a great place. I don't have to tell anybody else that, but, uh, it's just a a good time that we had the other day, and I'm thankful to serve with each of you. So that's all I have.
Mr. Huggins?
Um, just the first thing that was coming to mind is, as high as it's getting, is to check on the others, um, especially older people. I know there's a lot in our neighborhood. Keep an eye out on them, you know, maybe go knock on a door, or if you see them out walking around in the evening, um, there's still several in our neighborhood, you know, hey, how are you? How are you doing? Things like that. And just check on our neighbors. Um, Fourth of July, I mean, we can't, I don't think we can say enough of it. It was great. Some of the, I enjoyed a lot of the kind of, I wouldn't call it eavesdropping, but listening to conversations that night, whether it be in Alliance for Food, or just walking around or around while the music was playing, and, um, the fireworks and things, just listening to the, to the positive, the affirmation about the event and everything that was going on, and the tone that that was there. It was, it was a lot of, uh, there wasn't craziness, there wasn't, you know, the different things that were loud, and noxious kids and things, everything was really, really peaceful. I thought it was a great way to 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 spend that night. I liked doing it on the night of the third. I think that really worked out well. Um, and this time of year, I I see it pop up rarely, and it's the unthinkable, but look out for cars that are there and and one of my things that just blows me away is you hear dogs and kids left in cars and things, and it just, uh, I mean, I couldn't imagine seeing something like that breaking in a window, do whatever you needed to do, but just, uh, to keep an eye out for those things. Uh, I know it's kind of odd to to even say that, but the ridiculous things still happen, so, uh, keep a lookout for that. But, uh, no, that's all I have.
Fourth of July celebration, and actually, it's historically accurate to celebrate on the third, cuz John Adams' letter to his wife mentioned the pomp and circumstance on the third, not the fourth. So, if you wanna be historically accurate, there there you go right there. So, uh, but now, going back to the 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 events of the fourth and everything, the only thing that was missing on the night was a a night baseball game and having Ray Charles, uh, you know, America the Beautiful playing, you know, so that's really the only thing that was missing there. Uh, the morning of the fourth, the firing of the cannon, that's my absolute favorite. Uh, David Ward, his his speech that he gave, and just the historical background, I still, I I tell that story probably ten times a year, just of how the cannons got here and everything. And he brought up something that, uh, we now have the longest continuous firing of cannons on the Fourth of July in the country. So, that's pretty cool right there. So, you know, on on Thursday, while we're hanging out, uh, they they had, it was a work day in England, so. Happy Tre- Happy Treason's Day.
Um, also wanna thank the entertainment that we had. I was gonna mention David as well in the History Museum, but, you know, we had people that took time out to come out and sing and entertain at both of our events, and it was great talent. So thank you, event staff, for who you were able to find. It definitely put a different notch to what we provide in our activities. Um, also wanna call out the Police and Fire Department. We had a, um, incident in Massey, where I live, because of fireworks that night. And as many of us know, it's very dry. We got rain for the first time yesterday, I think. Um, Massey has a donut over it where we never get rain, so, um, and thank you for their fast response, and thank you for this council for having a fire station so close to where some of these big neighborhoods are, cuz they were able to put it out very quickly before it got to any homes and damaged homes. Um, so I know we got a lot of, um, comments on Facebook about the posting on the fire ordinance and what the state put out there that we abide by here, but it's all because we're trying to keep our community safe, and keep your homes safe, and keep your family. Um, during a presentation from the Fire Department, I guess our last meeting, it is amazing how much their call volume has gone up in the last few years, and it's not just fire, it's not just accidents, it's medical calls. So be sure that you thank them and say your prayers. So be sure that you thank them, and say your prayers for them and our police department and their safety every night, because it's not just the directing traffic. So again, we talk about it often, that they go in when everybody else is leaving. So thank you for what you do.
And I also wanna thank the staff for an excellent job on the Fourth of July. And one entertaining thing for me was, I was sitting down near the stage on the left side facing out, and, uh, Statue of Liberty, and, uh.
On stilts.
Uncle Sam came out on stilts, and all the kids just started running toward him, wanting their picture taken with him. So it was very entertaining. It was a good night.
Yeah. It's great.
And it's July eighth, put your fireworks away, we're done, you know? See you in late December.
I never heard as many fireworks this year as I did last year. It was very limited on fireworks this year, in my opinion, from what, where I live.
Did you see how much fireworks went up, prices are?
Involving everybody.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Go ahead.
Have you, dear?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second her motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?